Henderson can join us as we go along, but I think I will call the meeting to order. I will now call to order a special meeting of council on Wednesday, December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty at six P M. Attendance, I note that all members of council are in attendance with the exception of councillor Goomishell, who can't be with us this evening. And at the moment Deputy Mayor Henderson, who we hope will join us in progress. But we do have quorum to proceed. Approval of the agenda, we're going to have to make an amendment to the agenda. Because we do have an additional motion that isn't listed. Because it came out of our special meeting two nights ago. And I believe needs to be dealt with tonight, at least in discussion. So I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda with the amended to add the addition of a motion to deal with a lease for the Chamber of Commerce and the the town, the group, the accommodation levy board to house them on town property. So could I have an amendment, a motion to that effect, please?
I still move.
Thank you councillor Gru and a seconder.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay councillor Akagi, I heard first, so thank you councillor Akagi. If there is no discussion or other additions, I will call the question, all in favor of the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. I will also just interject that although not listed, I will be providing Mr. Knopper, our town clerk and senior administrator with the opportunity under new business to talk to us about the new resource guide that just hit the press today. And I think it's a very important thing that needs to be, the public needs to be informed about. So I will ask Mr. Knopper to jump in under new business and give us a briefing on that matter.
Your worship, just to note, the deputy mayor has did sign on prior to the vote of the agenda.
Okay, good, so he's here, thank you Deputy Mayor, welcome.
Sorry, I was so tight for time in my previous meeting.
Looks like you were tied up in wardrobe.
I'm very festive. Please put that in the minutes.
You beat me to it councillor Gru, I was, I probably wouldn't have been as nice. Thank you. Well, welcome Deputy Mayor. I will now move to disclosure of conflict of interest on any matter before council this evening. Hearing none, we have no presentations and we will move to the introduction consideration and passing of bylaws and motions and I will turn it over to councillor Harrison.
Thank you, the first one I have here, and I don't know if I have the full, so I may need some help from staff, but I P E D two zero zero one zero one G, third and final reading of the municipal plan, M P two O dash O one. And the municipal plan is a high level policy document that guides the mayor and council in the passing of bylaws, policies and the delivery of services requested by the residents of the town of St Andrews. And we did the first reading in January two thousand and twenty, the second reading in March two thousand and twenty. And we had a public hearing of objections last in July two thousand and twenty. And the motion is that council gives leave for the third and final reading of the municipal plan, M P two O dash O one for the town of St Andrews.
Thank you councillor Harrison, could I have a seconder for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you councillor Akagi. Any comments or questions from staff at this point in time?
Thank goodness appropriate.
Yes, it has been a long process and a good process, and we'll talk about that a bit afterwards. All right, if there are no input questions at this point in time, I will call the question. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion is passed, so now it will fall to me to read this for the third time by title. And this is the town of St Andrews Municipal Plan, M P twenty dash O one. Under the authority vested in it by section twenty four of the Community Planning Act, the municipal council of the town of St Andrews enacts as follows. This bylaw may be cited as the Town of St Andrews Municipal Plan. The document entitled Town of St Andrews Municipal Plan, attached hereto is adopted, read a third time and passed on the sixteenth day of December, two thousand and twenty. This bylaw hereby repeals bylaw number ten dash O three, the municipal plan bylaw adopted in two thousand and ten. The municipal plan, M P twenty dash O one applies to the town of St Andrews in southwestern Charlotte County in the province of New Brunswick. The plan establishes priorities and objectives for the provision of municipal services and facilities in the town and contains policies and proposals that will guide and control economic, social and physical development of the town. I will go through by title, part one, background. One point zero introduction, one point one title, one point two area of coverage, one point three purpose, one point four plan concept, one point five objectives, policies and proposals. Part two, two point zero overall plan goals. Two point one environment and climate change, two point one point one objectives, two point one point two policies, two point one point three proposals. Two point two architectural heritage, two point two point one objectives, two point two point two policies, two point two point three proposals. Two point three arts, culture and recreation, two point three point one objectives, two point three point two policies, two point three point three proposals. Two point four general land use and development, two point four point one objectives, two point four point two policies, two point four point three proposals. Two point five economy, two point five point one objectives, two point five point two policies, two point five point three proposals, two point six institutional, two point six point one objectives, two point six point two policies, two point six point three proposals. Two point seven infrastructure and services, two point seven point one objectives, two point seven point two policies, two point seven point three proposals. Two point eight housing, two point eight point one objectives, two point eight point two policies, two point eight point three proposals. Part three, administration and planned plan implementation. Three point zero bylaws, three point one capital budget, three point two amending the plan. Part four repeal and transition, schedule A, five year capital plan, schedule B, generalized future land use map. Therefore, I have now read for the third and final time bylaw, M P twenty dash O one. And read on the sixteenth of December, two thousand and twenty. Thank you council. We've gone. Councillor Harrison, if you're still up.
Your worship.
Yes.
Thank you, just a minor, very minor housekeeping issue is in the table of contents of the municipal plan. I believe that para three point two is mislabeled as three point three. So just a very minor correction there.
Okay, good. If if no one has any problem with that, thank you councillor Gru, we will make that correction.
On to the next one. This one I may need some help with, I don't seem to have a little page for this one, but I think I can stumble my way through it. It's a P E D two zero zero one zero two E. And it's the third and final reading, tennis and Andrew's secondary municipal plan, M P two O dash O two. And in terms of background, I'll just give a quick things, I don't have the usual thing we usually read in, but just from the plan itself, this manual's objective is to assist individual property owners, developers and designers, regulatory and municipal officials, as well as elected officials and understanding the expectations of the larger body public has for the future development in the specified areas outlined in the document. And basis to assist planning staff and planning committee members with the consistent and transparent reference for to development review and the permitting process. And it's to provide the public with a clear and legible document that conveys the general wishes of the people regarding the design of their community, future development and a measure of protecting their community from undesirable and detrimental design decisions that do not reflect the unique characters in Andrews or the position of the community for a better future. So that's kind of a general what it is in the, in a sense, it's replacing section nine of the old zoning bylaw. As I understand and I've heard from the planners that 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 that's part of its purpose and it expands it into having best practices as well. What I don't have, if Chris or Paul could help me out, I don't have the history in front of me of the first and second reading and public hearing of objections. So if that is required.
It's on page thirty nine of your package.
Thirty nine.
About the first first reading was February of two thousand and twenty, the second reading was August two thousand and twenty and the public hearing of objection was August of two thousand and twenty and you're good with the motion.
Yeah. And yeah, sorry, I can't seem to find it. The, but then the council gives leave for the third and final reading of the secondary municipal plan, M P two O dash O two for the town of St Andrews.
Thank you councillor Harrison, can I have a seconder for that motion, please? Councillor Gru, thank you, discussion council. Hearing none, I will then call the question, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion is passed and I will now read by title for the third and final reading. The town of St Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, M B, M P twenty dash O two. Under the authority vested in it by section twenty four of the Community Planning Act, the municipal council of the town of St Andrews enacts as follows. This bylaw may be cited as the Town of St Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan. Document entitled Town of St Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, attached hereto is adopted, read a third time and passed on the sixteenth day of December, two thousand and twenty. The secondary municipal plan, M P twenty dash O two has been prepared in accordance with sections twenty nine through thirty one of the Community Planning Act. It establishes policies to guide future land use and development in the town plat and environs and the historic business district, while providing guidance to town council in long term planning for those areas of town. Part one, background, one point zero title, one point one area of coverage, one point two purpose. Part two, objectives, policies and proposals. Two point one point one objectives, two point one point two policies, two point one point three proposals. Schedule A, map of historic business district and town plat and environs. Schedule B, design manual. Sign manual table of contents. Oops, sorry folks. Introduction, background, authority, purpose, interpretation, historic business district, massing and scale, facades and signs, materials, entrances, pedestrian centric design, landscaping, town plat and environs, residential street setbacks, view planes, massing and scale, materials, landscaping, appendix, glossary, references including sources and credits and notes. I've now read for the third and final time municipal, secondary municipal plan, M P twenty dash O two. And that was done on December the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. Congratulations council and for all of those who contributed to this over what was a fairly long period of time. There were any number of people which who all should be recognized, but there won't be enough time to recognize everybody right here, right now. But this was a massive piece of work, both of these documents that will guide our town for the next ten years. Thank you council. Councillor Bishop, we will move on to the motion.
Okay. Thank you. F A two O one two O four. The subject is tourism accommodation levy lease agreement. The background is the town of St Andrews has drafted a lease agreement for council consideration with the St Andrews Chamber of Commerce for use of office space at the W C O'Neil Arena Complex. Use of space would be shared between the chamber and the tourism accommodation levy board. Provided with this motion is a staff report from Chris Spear, C A O treasurer and a copy of the lease agreement. And the motion is that council approves the lease agreement at a rental cost of two hundred and fifty dollars, including H S T to provide shared use of office space at the W C O'Neil Arena Complex for the St Andrews Chamber of Commerce and the Tourism Accommodation Levy Board under terms and conditions established by the C A O. This agreement is contingent on the approval from the Board of the St Andrews Chamber of Commerce. And that's two, the rental cost is two hundred and fifty dollars, including H S T per month, I believe.
Thank you councillor Bishop. Can I have a seconder for that motion, please? Councillor Gru, thank you, discussion by council. We did have a pretty fulsome discussion of this on Monday night at the other special.
Just for clarification through your worship, two hundred and fifty is per month, just to just clarify that as a friendly amendment?
That's correct. Per month. Thank you.
Add that, if we can add that just as a friendly amendment, I'm sure that was the intent.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Other comments councillor Gru, did I see your hand?
Yes, thank you your worship, I just wanted to comment that this, this entire lease was initiated by council on Monday. And I think it's great that our staff were able to turn this whole thing around in two days and have it in front of us for tonight. Well done to staff on getting that done in short order. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gru, I concur and I'm sure we all do, we don't want to hold up the progress that we have made in this area and in terms of council's relationship with the chamber and with the the accommodation levy board that are going to be doing some very important work for us in the future. Thank you council, any other comments? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor of the lease as drafted, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion is also passed, thank you council. I'm now going to move over to a new business and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Knopper to explain to us, I think a very important initiative that he's been heavily involved in, Mr. Knopper.
Thank you your worship, I'll only take a couple of minutes here. So this, there's a new project that's going to be released on Tuesday, it'll go to every resident in the town of St Andrews. It's been a long, almost eight to ten months worth of work with the age friendly advisory committee on the development of what we're calling the new, and apologies for the look in sight, the new community resource guide for the town of St Andrews. So this resource guide was developed as a guide to give information and on community groups, organizations, businesses, basically what the needs that people would might want or have. So for instance, lists of pharmacies, lists of community organizations to participate in. It was really developed under a new horizons for seniors grant, but it was developed for all ages. So there's everything from how to get, how to contact the school board to get kids into kindergarten, all the way up to joining spin drifters or going to different doctors offices, identifying medical services within the area. So it was a very, very productive document that'll be going out as well with this document. There are two, or there'll be some extra papers that will go with it, but the critical things are this dot, this here, it's a new magnet. And it's a, it's a vinyl pouch, which you will stick onto your fridge, all first responders, including ambulance, police and fire have been notified that when looking for doing emergency calls to people's homes, including for medical or responses that way, this is to go on people's fridges. And within that, they will find hopefully the personal medical information form. So this will give everyone an opportunity to fill out what their doctor is, what medication they're taking at that time. And this will give a direct line for all first responders to go to this if there's a medical emergency first. So instead of having to try to bring all your pills or a list to your doctor, they can grab this document and take it with them so they know immediately what is going on or what you're taking. So it really gives you another step up for supporting our emergency services for helping you in the end. So this was again, all put together through a new horizons for seniors grant. The friendly advisory committee has been working very hard on this and through this, they were able to hire three seniors in our, seniors in our community to actually put this together in conjunction with them. So they did a lot of the groundwork, I see Chris laughing there, so I apologize for listing if anybody was this out of the seniors there. But this was a very thoughtful, very long process, but I think the community will be very excited to have this document. The nice thing about it is it's designed that the front cover is water resistant. So if you spill anything on it, you can wipe it away and it'll be great. The interior paperwork is matte style, so you're actually able to write on it and it won't smudge, so you're able to actually keep notes and other information. But it's just a great document that'll be going out to help community members as a whole. So I would, I do want to thank the advisory committee for all their hard work on this and all the volunteers and, and everybody that was attributed to this. I think the community should be very impressed and happy with it. It will be available online on our website for download as well as if anybody has any comments or needs additional medical information documents, would be free to, to print them out for you, so it's, will be limited supply, but we'll have them for you and available. So overall, it was a great success and hopefully see more of these new horizons grants and more age friendly initiatives come from it.
Okay, thank you Mr. Knopper, council, any comments for Mr. Knopper?
Question, is there a path for, for doing future upgrades on this document or, or I guess corrections as we move forward?
Through your worship, that's one hundred percent correct, we have the digital copies. So it will take nothing, if there's changes or modifications to it, we can make those and update them on, on it. When it comes to printing another version of it, I think, I know that there was the age friendly community organization has tried to put in for another new horizon grant to do another round of printing. But that's, that'll come if, if they get the grant for it. But at this point, there'll be the printed copies for the town and the digital copies that can be modified as needed.
Thank you so much.
Good, thank you Mr. Knopper. Terrific, that's another initiative and it's another one of those thresholds for us in terms of the age appropriate community designation, which we were fortunate to receive and are, are moving forward with. So that's great. Now we'll look to, I guess it's, we're already at question period. Mr. Knopper, have we got any questions?
So through you your worship, as per the new policy for the social media policy for council meetings, I'll go to those that are on Zoom first, as of right now, I have not received an email as for a question. So I'll go to Mr. Miller first, Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller has no questions, so we're good there. I will go to the hands P C, can you please state your name and if you have a question for council? Doesn't look like there is, so at this time council, it's back to you.
Okay, thank you Mr. Knopper. As, as was pointed out a bit earlier, I hesitate to say this, but I am going to say that this, this is our last regularly scheduled meeting for two thousand and twenty. And we all get a little bit of time off over the holiday period. And I think that's particularly important for our senior staff and for that matter, for all of our staff of the town who worked very diligently to try to keep up with us this year. I hate to keep quoting how many meetings we have this year and I think we'll talk about that in the new year. But we have had a very busy year and the matters that were before us and we decided tonight were amongst the most onerous things that we were involved in for the last couple of years. So I'm hoping and optimistically saying that we'll be busy until the end of our term in May. But I hope we won't be as busy as we've been for the last twelve months. But I want to thank council's dedication for all being here through everything for, especially since the, the onslaught of, of COVID. So I'm going to turn it over to council, that's enough for me to say I bumped the line, but council, this is your opportunity to comment at the end of the year. Councillor Gru.
Thank you your worship, just two minor things. Number one is I'd like to express my appreciation to Xander for all of your efforts in getting these two documents done, the municipal plan. I know you have invested a tremendous amount of time in doing them. You can give yourself a pat on the back because nobody else is there. And for council, again, as the mayor said, it has been an extremely busy year for council. We have had seventy plus meetings and I just wanted to extend my best for the holiday season for all of council and for all of our staff. I think our staff, sometimes we overlook them or don't give them the, the benefit that they're due. I wish all of our staff a very pleasant, safe and happy holiday season. And same thing to all of council, thank you.
Thank you councillor Gru.
Your worship?
Yes.
I just wanted to echo your comments and councillor Gru's, this, going through both the, the municipal plan and the secondary plan, it is no small accomplishment by council and it's not something that hundreds of hours went into. It was literally, when you add up everybody's time between staff, the volunteers and council, thousands of hours have gone into, to developing this, so it's, it's a major task for any community. And I'm very proud that this council, especially in extended time in our fourth year that we all stayed the course and, and pass these important documents for our community and didn't have a new council coming in and having to start this whole process all over again. So I think everyone on here should be extremely proud. But yeah, I wanted to echo the, the comments on the Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission and the work that Mr. Gopin and Mr. Henderson was supportive on here as well. There was times where we changed the document and then we changed it back to the way it was. And, and I never ever sensed dealing with them that they were frustrated with council. There was a lot, a lot of meetings, there was a lot, a lot of changes, a number of different versions. And they were wonderful partners in this process that the town of St Andrews was very blessed that they were, they were a partner and our staff of helping to develop that. And then of course, not to take away from anything, but Mr. Spear and Mr. Knopper also, how many meetings did they have to send out decks and town staff prepare this for us? And, and they've been on these calls just as much as us and maybe at times had a quick solution that would maybe cut a half an hour out of meeting and they, they listened to us. So I just think that we have so much to be proud of today. And the only other thing I'll say is you remember early in the process, there was times when we were getting letters of objections, there was, you know, time when there was a lot of people, you know, sitting in the audience and showing some frustration and some major concerns. We went to third reading and we actually, it appears that the community fully supports this plan as we have not heard any objection coming into third reading really. So I think us being able to adapt and realize that, you know, sometimes you have to make small adjustments. But we kept the spirit of the plan and again, there's so much to be proud of, so congratulations to everyone. sometimes you have to make small adjustments, uh, but we kept the spirit of the plan, and again, there's so much to be proud of, so congratulations to everyone.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anyone else want to comment? Wow. I think it's, I think we're all ready for uh, a holiday vacation here. So council, if there aren't any other uh, comments, uh, I want to wish everybody the best uh, and 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 relax because we're not quite finished yet. We still have a few months left on our uh, mandate, and uh, early in the year, uh, we've already had those discussions, Mr. Knopper and I, and we will be putting together a meeting early in January to uh, talk about what pieces of work this council will hope to or or is prepared to uh, get finished before the end of our mandate. So that will be another important discussion. So all the best to everyone, and thank you, uh, council for your efforts. Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Thanks, everybody. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Deputy Mayor, don't go on.
Thanks, thanks, everyone. We we are adjourned.
No, no.
Sorry about that, Paula and Chris.
Deputy Mayor, I waited for you.
I alas found the motion after. I I kept looking.